I have Mike hanging, board member. Staff introductions.
Matt Williams, city planner.
Robert Grant, code enforcement.
Thomas Camming, fire inspector.
Okay, before we get to, actually before we even get to the adoption minutes, we've got to add a couple of items. Uh, one is, uh, we have to add the minutes for the June 4th meeting. So I'll make a motion that we add the June 4th minutes.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we also have to add a motion to accept the resignation of John Calafano from the board. So I'll move to make a motion to add to the agenda to accept the resignation of John Calafano.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, and we also have to, nope, okay, we did that.
Yeah.
We'll wait on that. We'll wait for the project to add the letter.
Okay. Uh, okay, so, uh, is there a motion to accept the June 4th, uh, June 5th?
Fifth.
So vote. Or whichever.
Second.
And now September 4th meeting minutes.
Move to, move to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay. Now, a vote to accept the resignation of John Calafano. I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of John Calafano from the board.
Second. All in favor?
Now, go to item number three, final plan review of the major use site plan entitled Main Street LLC for applicant owner Dustin Lawrence. The proposal is to construct a 6,600 square foot building for rental to small commercial companies. The subject property is approximately 3.6 acre parcel located on Route 1A of Bangor Road, Tax Map 143, lots 1, 2, and 4 in the urban zoning district. As you hear someone representing Main Street LLC.
Sure, Randy Brack from Carpenter Associates, and I'll be, uh, representing Dustin Lawrence this evening.
And this is Dustin?
I'm Dustin.
This is Dustin, sorry.
Before you get into it, so today there was the letter from, uh, Inland Fishery, Fishes and Wildlife that was sent in. So if you could make a motion to accept that letter into the packet if you so choose.
Make a motion to accept that one.
Second. All in favor?
Thank you. And Brittany, would you mind handing those in?
We got it like yesterday.
Yeah, it was like last night.
So, uh, staff and applicant have had a chance to go through this?
Yeah.
I mean, looking through it quick, it doesn't look like Fish and Game has any serious issues. Okay, Randy?
Yes, so, um, I think everybody heard our speech or spiel last time. Not, not a lot has changed, um, with this, but we did listen to some of the comments. Well, we listened to all the comments, I should say, and made, uh, all of the corrections we feel. Um, there was a lot of question about buffers and screening and those kind of things. So we listened to the neighbors and you'll see on the new plan that we have added quite a few trees and shrubs along those boundaries to help shield that. That was one of the major concerns that we had heard about. We had cleaned up some of the line work, uh, some of the narrative and the comments. We straightened out the, uh, the math on the table. Um, we added the, uh, the signature block. We got, we got to the last letter, I think, that's required. We did also talk to the folks at your, uh, for 911 addressing. They basically said at this time to just call it for Bangor Road. And then, of course, uh, once we get occupancies for each of the units, it will have a unit A, B, C, D, E, or whatever you dictate on each of those units. Um, as it stands right now, there's five, uh, units, no more than five. But as we were discussing earlier, there is the chance that somebody may want to rent two of them or three of them or all of them. So that would change that designation a little bit. And, and of course, change, um, the separation requirement that we would need between those units. So, um, we did, uh, add some notes to the, uh, the firewall or the separation between the units. But again, that will be more clearly dictated once the tenants show up and we know exactly what they're going to store there. Cause that will change the hazard. There may be a chance for one hour separation or two hour separation. We've showed a detail for a two hour separation, so you, so you'll know what that looks like if we have to do that. Um, it's basically, uh, a UL 411 listing. And that's basically studs with two layers of 5H sheet rock on both sides from the concrete clear to the steel deck to the roof deck. I think that covers almost, if I've missed any of the things you wanted us to clean up, I, I think that covers all of them, but be happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Which sheet is the screening shown, shown best on?
The, the screening is best shown on the site plan itself on sheet two.
Sheet two, okay.
Yep. That would be the one that you folks would sign. And I, uh, I do apologize, I didn't, uh, didn't bring my lars for signatures this evening, but, uh, understand that you do want those on real Mylar for signing, not paper?
One copy on Mylar and the other three can be paper.
Okay.
I pose a question, you folks are directly to the north?
Yes.
And did you get to see the plan with the new, um, screening?
Um, we, we glanced at it this, uh, this, this evening. I spoke with, um, Matt earlier today.
Lovely.
And, um, I've actually talked to Randy in between last meeting and this meeting.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
So Randy?
And we talked about the door, the exit door on the back.
Yeah, oh, that's true. That's, uh, that was one other thing that was missing from the plan, thank you. Uh, we have proposed a, a door to the rear, um, to get access to that to allow, uh, entrance and egress primarily from the building, so. And certainly that's one area where that wall and that hallway would have to be protected regardless of who is in the unit.
So, um, in our discussion, um, would you, uh, on the plan, you show a two hour rated wall in, as a narrative?
Yeah.
And talking with Tom, um, a one hour wall right now is the minimum requirement.
Right.
That we know of. Because we can't do anything about assumed storage.
Yeah.
If somebody moves in there and, or wants to store, one person wants to store toilet paper and the other one wants to store paper goods, it's only a one hour rated wall.
Right.
But if somebody wants to store, you know, high volume paints and stuff like that, then you're looking at a two hour wall. So I personally, on the plan, I would just assume see, as you have it written here, a one hour wall.
Okay.
Okay, for the record, but some sort of narrative on the plan indicating that if the renter or the individual is going to do any kind of high hazard storage, that the developer would then increase the wall fire rating.
Rating, yeah.
So that needs to be on the plan, some sort, some sort of narrative.
Okay.
That way we have it on record. What, because if you go to IBC, chapter three, in the classi, in the classifications, if somebody decides they want, and Chuck, and you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna hit the roof when you hear this. If somebody wants to store furniture, you're looking at a three hour wall, not just a two hour wall. And that's based upon the IBC.
Unless it's unfinished.
What's that?
Furniture.
No, doesn't matter.
Really?
If it has any kind of cushioning, if it has any kind of fabric, it has any kind of.
Then you have to go three, three sheets of sheet rock on each side?
On each side. You're talking about, well, it'd have to be a design wall, but it's gotta be a three hour wall for that kind of.
Unless they pay for the extra five.
So it's a very expensive wall. So the idea of the IBC is the type of wall separation is determined by the type of storage, not the other way around. So I think a narrative in that from the developer stating that they would go ahead and change the wall depending on the storage based upon whatsoever.
Do you, would you, would you want to see that on this sheet or on the building plan sheet that we show?
Ward, I would recommend, and Thomas, if you let me know if this works for you, but as a condition of approval that, you know, the plan was approved with a one hour firewall base, but the level of fire protection needs to be elevated. Plans for like increasing the fire protection will be approved by the fire department prior to building permits or issue?
Fine by me, yeah. If you want to.
Does that work for you?
Give me the language, I can add the condition.
I think Thomas has got that language for you, so.
Okay.
So how do we address that ten years down the road?
That's, that's, that's the code enforcement and fire department.
Yeah.
You have to do that.
So each one of those units is gonna have an occupancy permit, I assume?
Yeah.
So. At that time, you have the right to come and inspect it and see if it's protected well enough.
Every time, just.
A tenant change.
Every time a tenancy changes, we would go in and do a new inspection and figure out what needs done.
So I think I'm getting to your point about what items are gonna be stored there, whether it's one hour, two hour. And you're saying, not saying that Tom will determine whether it's hazardous or non-hazardous. I mean, is there a definition that?
Yes, there's a, there's a clear definition in the code.
In the building code, the IBC, chapter three, will decide whether it's normal storage, high storage, or extra high storage, et cetera, et cetera. It gives you, it spells it out as to what, actually what the commodities are based upon those storage. Is that what you're looking to be adding? No, it just, just, if it, if it does come to that, then it has to be.
Right.
You know, has to be built accordingly. So, and that's based upon the code enforcement office and the, and the fire department.
One hour, one hour is, uh, is approved for construction, but and then based on occupancy.
You mind going to the mic?
Two hours.
Do you mind going to the mic?
In that or take the mic?
Pretty loud, though.
Do you have, and you have language already?
Yeah, it's in my fire letter.
I would just say that the one hour fire rating, we talked about being approved for construction, but and then based on occupancy, it would be overridden by a two hour based on storage of chemicals.
Just to let the board know, you know, this is Chuck Lawrence.
Chuck Lawrence.
I've been a thorn in Chuck's eye for a while.
Actually, you were fine.
Okay, so we don't need wording?
Well, when you.
On the site plan?
Well, if you make a motion to approve the project, there'll be a condition of approval, which would be to add that, we'll add that condition to the site plan.
Okay. Ms. Blood, excuse me, I, I know you wanna talk, but could you wait until the public hearing?
Of course.
Okay, thank you. I know, I know you're anxious to ask something. Okay, thank you.
I'm good.
I got nothing.
One question I had, uh, we talked about site distance last time and in the, in the revision, it said that there was at least 500 in each direction. Is that something that you had determined, Randy, or?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
And actually, it's, um, greater than 500 in both directions. But we just topped it off at 500. It's closer to 1,200 in one direction and probably 720 in the other direction.
Okay.
But no need to, unless you wanted to see that.
And consider that's a 35 mile an hour zone, our, our standards would be 350 feet.
Yeah.
I mean, just to add to that, there was a conversation about the intersection at 179, 180 last time. Again, it's not particularly, it's on this project to resolve our issue, but staff is meeting with DOT to discuss that intersection and the potential, potential, and promises of lighted intersection there. So we'll see where that goes.
Thomas, on your letter, the first bullet point is, there shall be a clear width all, all around the building for complete access to the building. Now, is that a walking path or are you talking about being able to drive behind the building?
Meaning, so basically saying that we need to be able to access the building from the side, so no brush up against the building and making it so that it's passable for foot traffic for us to be able to get around to the backside where the cat, where the catwalk is, to get to that rear entrance.
Okay, so you're not talking about vehicular?
No.
Okay. Just, just curious, uh, during this construction, does Thomas Coffee's old building get torn down? Or what's the, what do you fear is gonna happen with that? Just curious.
That's kind of the plan, yeah. I, I believe so. I'm not sure the timeframe exactly, but I, I, that's kind of, I've been, I've had it quoted anyways by the same company that is going to be doing all the work.
I guess it's up to you to decide whether it's worth saving or.
No, I don't plan on saving it long term anyways.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. The other question I had, just kinda curious too, is the driveway goes out to Bangor Road. It goes straight, but then there's a little hook to the left. Any?
And the only reason we did that was a suggestion from staff or someone to say align it with the existing curb cut. Um, we had straightened it, but it did require us to make a little adjustment there. And we all thought it was best to probably not bring in DOT right now and just keep the same curb cut there. So as part of the project, we also, uh, agreed to close off the other open areas that were there.
Right.
Um, it wasn't, I think, as much as some folks thought, but we do have a note here to say, hey, let's turn that into a spot where you just can't pull in anywhere you want. Um, and we've got a few trees to help guide folks those through there too. So, uh, hopefully it's a little better.
Yeah, so you're, you're, you're closing off the one curb cut?
Yes.
Yeah. Greatly appreciated. Mark, do you have any questions?
Yes.
Any other issues from staff?
No, I'm just on the TRT report. I didn't, we didn't cross off that the state historic preservation sent a letter, but they did. It's in your packet that's stamped that there's no historic.
Yes.
On site, but the TRT report just doesn't reflect that.
Are you planning on heating this place? Any type of heat in those units?
Uh, yes.
I think the plan, right, the last plan was to go with heat pumps.
Yeah.
Cause we removed the propane tank.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, cause I didn't see propane tank there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I wouldn't imagine you're gonna go with electricity. Okay. Now, open the public hearing. Ms. Blood, if you wanna.
Thanks.
Certainly, come on down. Just introduce yourself.
Sure.
For the record.
My name is Judy Blood. I, I live at 12 Bangor Road. Just have a couple of questions. Um, and, and one was, uh, so it's changing, I didn't realize they had changed from propane to heat pumps. So, um, the place where the propane tanks were going to be is just gone now? Or that fenced off area is gone? Then, uh, just hearing about the ability to, to circumnavigate the building, will that be asphalt? Will it be stone? How, how will that be? Cause that's different than what I saw.
From the exit door, it will have to be maintained, so it'll have to be some kind of walking surface. We don't plan to pave it.
Okay.
But along the edge of the building facing the main road, we probably will pave that section.
Yeah, okay.
And the rest will be, uh, just cleared walkway.
Okay, perfect.
Uh, at least that's the plan.
Okay, excellent, thank you. And I had one other question, which has escaped me right this moment, but it will come back. They always do.
We're looking at the plan.
What's that?
We're looking at the plan, maybe jog, remembering?
I don't know. It's probably nothing. Oh, I know, yeah. Yes, apparently I glanced over and it did. So, um, uh, so these, these five units will be leased for how long? What's, what's your, what's your plan on leasing? Will it be at a minimum of a year or?
Well, normally, I mean, most of mine are anywhere from like, uh, a year to like, three years.
Okay.
Um, most of the time I haven't been doing any more than that. Most of them still just renew, um, but a lot of them don't like to have really long leases.
Right.
Just in case.
So a minimum of a year then, you're thinking?
Yeah.
Okay. And then at that time, the, when the, when the lease renews, then that's when the code enforcement would come in and, and reevaluate if it changes.
Only if the tenant changes.
Right, exactly.
If they renew, we wouldn't go back in.
No, totally, yeah. But you would, how would you know that?
Well, they, they would have to come and apply.
A new, a new tenant would have to apply for.
For occupancy for that.
Okay, got it, thank you. Okay, perfect, thank you so much.
Turn on. We're not doing Zoom, are we?
Uh, no.
Okay. Close the public hearing. Any other issues from staff?
Uh, no.
Any other comments, Brittany?
Got nothing. Oh, you want, you want a motion now? Okay, yes. So which of these bullet points from your letter need to go into the motion?
What he wants.
What's that?
What he said, so.
Sorry, I have one more question.
Gotta move faster.
Where the, where the, um, where the old firehouse used to stand, there is a walking tour sign that actually was placed right in front of where the old firehouse stood. And then it was moved, so it's kind of more central on the property. Would it be prudent to move it back over to where the old firehouse stood rather than just kind of being right in the middle of, of the opening or not?
Is that the sign that's like right by the road?
Yeah. Yeah, it's the old, it's a, it's a walking tour, historical society walking tour. And it was placed right in front of the old firehouse. And for some reason, I don't know why, they moved it down to more central on that piece of property. So I'm just thinking it might be, might be a good idea to move it back to where it was.
I don't know where the old firehouse is.
Right, exactly.
I'm gonna get the right of the floor, right?
So, yeah, it was, it was, um, it was actually, the property was 4 and 10 Bangor Road, and it was actually right in front of 4, so that smaller piece.
Kind of where it would have been the old track line here is where the old firehouse was.
Okay.
I just don't want it to disappear, that's all, I just don't want it.
You do want it to disappear?
I don't want it to disappear, yeah. So, anyway.
So probably sounds like, according to Mrs. Blood, I mean, more towards that, the corner of your property. You know, that's out of your way.
It's probably.
If it's okay with you guys.
Well, it's probably in the road right of way, right? Not on the property.
Likely would be in the right of way, yeah. So I have to talk to the highway department about that.
Or historical.
Where it should be.
Or, yeah. Imagine if it's in the right of way, we placed it, or if it was placed once and moved, I don't know why we would have moved it, but the highway department probably moved it.
Right, okay, thank you so much. And thanks for reopening that one.
Are you sure?
I guess that's up to Mrs. Blood if she.
Hit the gap while I'm done.
Yeah, that's what she's saying now. So there, Mr. Williams, which of these bullet points from the Fire Guy letter do we wanna have? Or are you jotting on information there, language?
No, I'm jotting down the, remind me to ask highway about the.
Okay.
Why we would have moved that, or if it even matters, if we can move that. I mean, I don't know about bullets off the top of my head, but I will say that the condition of approval would be worded as, you know, for to approve, uh, the project, but with the condition that, um, in between.
If the hazard class changes.
Uh huh.
Okay, if the hazard class changes for the storage and the, for storage occupancy, then the developer will need to upgrade the fire separation wall.
Before a new certificate of occupancy is.
For a new certificate of occupancy. From, from the one hour. Yes, so if, if, if the hazard class changes.
Right.
For storage, then the developer will have to upgrade from one hour fire separation to the appropriate fire separation wall.
Perfect, that is it, perfect. There we go.
Maybe we should just have Mike make the motion.
I would, I would.
I think he's ready.
There you go, Mike.
See that? That's what happens.
I'll add to what you make for motion. I don't even know how, where does the thing end?
I don't think you need that. I think what you said is good.
Yeah.
I can't remember what I said, so go for it. You wrote, you wrote it down.
Had I known, I wouldn't have written it. Okay, so make a motion to accept the final plan for a major use site plan entitled Main Street LLC for applicant owner Dustin Lawrence. A proposal is to construct a 6,600 square foot building for rental to small commercial properties. The subject property is approximately 3.6 acre parcel on Route 1A in Bangor, Tax Map 143, lots 1, 2, and 4 in the urban zoning district. Subject to the, uh, condition that if the, uh, if the hazard classification should change relative to who, who the, uh, the renters are, uh, then the developer needs to upgrade the one hour, uh, separation wall to whatever is appropriate for the material, the code classification for the materials being stored.
Prior to the issuance of.
I'm sorry, prior to issuance of a occupancy permit. By the city.
Yeah.
It's good.
Second.
All in favor?
No, I'm gonna vote against it. I don't like the way that foot came out, right?
You made the motion.
I know.
Thank you, Donald.
Thank you very much.
All set.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you. And thanks for being so coop, so cooperative with the, uh. And thanks for being so cooperative with your butters.
No, they're very good.
Much, much appreciated.
They don't wanna be bad neighbors either, so.
No, no, absolutely not. He never has been, as far as I'm.
That's bad business.
Never know, might even have a face. I may not face, they bake it all.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, definitely.
Can we leave?
Thank you.
Well, we haven't adjourned yet.
I wish I was disappointed.
We move on here and, uh.
Hey, kids.
Well, you know where we are.
Kids, sorry.
You know where we are.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, see you guys.
Thanks, guys. You guys, stay up comments.
Um, just an update on the comp plan, uh, at your November meeting. Yeah, or, sorry. Your November meeting, you'll get your first view of the comprehensive plan, um, in its mostly entirety. There may be some small additions or changes made to it, but you'll be reviewing that. Look over public engagement. I'll have a checklist for you to review the state requirements for the comprehensive plan. We will probably get that, well, probably will get that to you ahead of time with your normal packets so that you have time to review it. Look for these things, cause it will take you a little bit longer, but, um, again, this plan's been going on for a year and a half. We've covered it pretty well, so I can give you guidance, kind of show you like, here's the requirement, here's where it's at. You read it and see if it matches what that requirement needs to be, um, to make the review easier and smoother for you all. That'll be your first look at it, and then we'll probably bring it back for your December meeting before it goes to, uh, council for final approval, December 16th at their meeting. And it'll go to them a first time as well in November and then come back a second time in December. So, um, each body, legislative body will have two chances to review it at full. I mean, John and Rick have been part of the process the whole time, but, um, for the rest of the board, that'll be more opportunity for you to review it.
Looking forward, I mean, to next budget year. I know we're a bit away, but.
Nevermind.
Talk about it now, especially considering, I mean, if all goes well, we'll pass the new comprehensive plan, which ultimately should guide us in revising the ordinance.
Yeah.
Which is a massive job, which, which I suspect we would need outside help doing.
Yes.
So if you haven't thought about it, I would highly suggest putting money in your next year's budget.
Yes.
To address that.
I do have some money in the budget from this year to kind of potentially address some of that. You know, the ordinance as a whole, we'll probably break it into specific chunks. I work through it that way as opposed to budgeting for it all in one calendar year. You know, there'll be certain parts that we have to do together, like Article 6, which is the plan board review process. And, um, looking at chapter, Articles 10 and 11 and with that, because that's all part of the review process, which stormwater or parking, um, those are all linked. But we're looking at, you know, portions of it that are smaller, like the lighting plan portion of it or lighting requirements that is part of the review process, but it's not so intricately tied or complicated that we could just pay someone to review that on its own and update our lighting section because currently isn't workable. It was something I was gonna plan to do anyway. So like even before the comp plan was done, just cause it's a technical issue, not a public engagement, like what's the community think issue? So, uh, yes, I do have a little bit of money in my budget this year to do some of that. But it will be, uh, broken up probably into two or three year processes of 50K a year, more than likely.
So looking forward, I mean, you think the ordinances would be revised piecemeal or versus wait until two or three years, which I think is.
No, I mean, so it's different, it depends. So, yeah, like part of the ordinance, if you're looking at the land use classifications, the zoning, like, we have to have a request from council to amend those. So if council never requests it, the amendment doesn't get made.[1792.11] I mean, like it would probably process is to make that request occur based on the new future land use map that's being produced in this comp plan. But those aren't too huge of changes. I think a lot of what, the real meat of what will be changed and updated is parking for downtown in particular, but then also adding and looking at our table of uses and what uses are more relevant, don't exist in our table yet that have been popping up, could use better definitions, and then housing and, you know, short term rental potentially were big pieces that need to be addressed. But again, like, we'll have to do those, kind of, we can do those at the same time, but again, those will be chunks or it'll be smaller pieces that we just don't touch because they're not quite as important or high priority. But doing the whole ordinance would probably be multi hundred thousand dollar project, so we would have to break it up in some capacity.
Yeah, I'm just reading, you know, some of the higher priority issues like Airbnbs or things to do with downtown. You know, hopefully would not be put off.
No, I mean, the higher priority issues would be the first things that we address. Like this year, I may touch some of the smaller ones because I have only a couple thousand in my budget for that, but for FY '26, those high priority issues would be the ones that I actually budget for.
I think, I'm not sure where in the ordinance would be, but you know, I seriously think the city should consider impact fees. I'm not quite sure.
We've had staff discussions about those and that, what they could look like. Again, that's something we would hire out to a consultant to kind of help us formulate the best approach for those or if they're necessary, but at this point, staff's pretty sure they might be.
Any questions for Matt or...
I have no questions.
Orders?
Or you, or him.
Are you searching for new candidates?
We have the advertisement out, yeah. Thank you for mentioning that because I was gonna say that too, yeah. We have an advertisement out. We'll, you know, as they come in, we'll look at them. Maybe next meeting, hopefully, we'll have two full, two applicants ready to go for you to review. But if not, we'll just keep pushing the ad and see when people will turn in.
Yeah, I assume you're hoping, open to suggestions.
Yeah, well, if you have suggestions, don't tell me, go tell the person you think should apply.
Well...
I do, but I won't say anything right now while we're still live.
Yeah, well, I mean, you can, don't tell me at all. Just tell them, send me an email and I'll eventually get it.
Anything more? About your joint? Second. All in favor?